For those that are in the audience, we're waiting for the speaker. So we're gonna wait a few more moments.
That's what it is, Joanne.
Just gonna introduce you, you introduce them, okay?
Thank you for being so patient and waiting. The regu-- can you hear me out there? Is that, are these on?
Excellent.
Just before we call to order, the regular meeting will immediately follow the work session. We will then have a special meeting immediately following the regular meeting tonight. So with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order, the work session of March 25th. As I look around the table, we do have one council person not in attendance at this time, and that's Councilwoman Sherri Lortano. She is caught in court right now, but she hopes to be here by the time of the regular meeting. So let's begin with the agenda item tonight for discussion is the council will receive a presentation from MAGA on the results of the Southwest Valley Local Transit System Study. Christine McCurdy, Inre Governor and Branch Coordinator. Kristy?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council members. And we're really pleased to bring the culmination of about a year and a half study for the Southwest Valley Local Transit System Study. To give you a little bit of history, in 2008, we presented, or actually 2009, we presented a study to the city council that focused on a circulator system that was Goodyear-specific. Not too long before that, we had a circulator study done in the city of Avondale that was also Avondale-centric. So what we wanted to do at the culmination of both of those studies was maybe take a more regional look at circulator service because all of our cities in this area are relatively small, and trying to endeavor to create something that's going to work for the long term is a little more challenging than maybe looking at it collectively together, trying to find ways that we can keep residents in the Southwest Valley, in the Southwest Valley for their needs, their medical, their transportation, their activities, their shopping. So with MAGA's assistance, we were able to get a planning study done. This was all at MAGA's cost. And I think what we're bringing you tonight is a pretty comprehensive look at not just how this service can be provided in a regional way, but also how it can work in the city of Goodyear. So Jorge Luna here from MAGA is going to present what we found through the study, including some of the public participation. As you know, we had a public meeting this past week at Centerra Mirage School that went very well, and he's got some information from that meeting as well. So I'm gonna turn it over to him. With us as well is Jennifer Pine from URS Consultants. She was part of the study team involved, and we'll probably be engaging her in a few questions also. So we have the presentation, then we have plenty of time for questions. And I'll turn it over to Jorge.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jorge Luna. First and foremost, I apologize, my sincere apologies for getting here late. I truly apologize. Don't want to waste your time. I just want to go ahead and start with the presentation, and please stop me at any time if you have any questions. I'll be more than happy to address some myself or Jen. So for starters, Christine, she's been very involved in the study as well as Cato. We've, Mr. Escobar, we've been working a lot and getting a lot of information and trying to, you know, pull together a concept for the Southwest Valley in forms of transit. So, you know, when we started the study, we know everything is a competition, you know, fire budgets, police budgets, library, everything is a competition. So the approach that we took for this study, we said, what system can we propose that is effective, you know, and efficient, and is not the first thing to be eliminated? If it doesn't, you know, if we propose something that's too vast and too costly, it may not be effective, then it will be the first thing to be removed. So we want to take a very conservative approach in proposing a system. And so with that in mind, we began also to looking at different things. We said, why consider more transit? You know, the industry out there and national information is showing that there is, you know, for time management, you want to decrease your time spending in a car. You want independence, people that can't drive or maybe choose not to drive, they also want that mobility to be able to access all the services that a city can offer. Cost savings, minimize the cost of an individual having to fuel, you know, pay taxes on their car, vehicle license tax, maintaining, maintenance of the car, car payments, et cetera. Independence for people, improve air quality, less people on the road, you know, creating dust, more people on transit. One vehicle holds five passengers. A typical bus holds around 43 passengers, that's a 40-foot bus, or 18 passengers if it's a smaller neighborhood circulator. Economic benefits, there's in the industry of the driver that's operating the vehicle, the maintenance of the vehicle, fuels, tires, belts, hoses, all that brings value to the economy, to the local economy that's providing that service. Local values, and that is, you know, what the committee wants to be able to fund, and what are the priorities, providing mobility, providing access to the different services of a community, job generator as well. And also cultural changes. The youth is now, a lot of research is showing that youth, they're opting to forego getting driver's licenses and getting them at a later age because they want to be able to use on iPad, smartphone, and travel on a, you know, circulator or on a transit vehicle and just have the mobility rather than having to pay or use a vehicle. And then at the end, seniors and the quality of life of those individuals that maybe, I say deteriorates and they can no longer drive, but that access face-to-face, the connection that people have, that's actually, you cannot put a price of that, you know, that's a livability benefit. So when we approached this, the study itself, we said, okay, let's look at existing and planned, the transit network for the Southwest Valley. And if you see on the screen, one on your left-hand side is existing and the, on the right-hand side is planned RTP. And in the planned RTP for the future, a lot of the services are concentrated in city of, city of Phoenix, city of Tallison, some services coming out to the city of Goodyear, but not that much. When we analyzed that, we said, okay, let's bring together our study partners, and we've worked, been working great with city of Avondale, town of Buckeye, city of Goodyear, city of Litchfield Park, city of Tallison, city of Phoenix, Maricopa County, and Valley Metro. And they've been great partners in helping us out, getting all the information we need. And we approached the study and we said, okay, let's do two primary goals. Let's provide a local transit system that's effective and efficient. And then the second one is, let's develop a transit system that connects internally, but also to the rest of the region. So those were our two primary goals. So the study outcome, what we did is, it's been almost, I believe, 16 or 17 months that we've been doing the study and getting a lot of public feedback and trying to get all the information and research together. And we looked at short-term, mid-term, and long-term. And all these, we put some planning horizons, some horizon years for that, but it's, everything's based on funding. So if funding's available, it speeds up, if not, it slows down a little bit. So, but we built it flexible enough that a community, if it so chooses, can implement some of the strategies that are included in here. So for the short-term, we looked at efficiencies, what can we do now is, whatever's operating right now, is efficiently operating, is hitting the right markets? So we looked at that, then we looked at the midterm, we said, okay, oh, sorry, then we went from short-term efficiency to long-term. What would be in the future? What would be the, you know, that network that would be in the long range by, say, 20, 30? And then we, using those two bookends, we zeroed in into the midterm or the growth recommendations. So this has been our approach to the study itself has been, we've done data analysis, transit summit, and the survey results. And all these, we're able to fine-tune and hone in on the recommendations that will be presented before you today. So in the data analysis part, and I apologize if some of you have seen this already, we looked at future and existing and future land use, we looked at population and population density, and then also employment and employment density. And that's very critical because it's, that density makes that, the Goldilocks zone of population and employment that actually makes a successful transit system. If you have sufficient people living in an area, working in an area, they generate trips. If it's a single household or something like that, two persons per household, not that many trips, the more people you have, the greater need to access the transit system. And then a lot of the research and analysis, we looked at all this information and trying to figure out in the future, where's growth going to be? And these are based on some models, but it, the growth looks like to the west and slightly to the south. So that's on the data analysis portion. And then we conducted a survey of the community, and we asked residents a handful of questions, what would be the ideal transit system? What would be, what are some of the key aspects of a transit system that you would like? Where would it serve, et cetera, et cetera? So we have, you know, an entire report, it's on our project website. But interesting enough, we had great participation.
So you're saying 48%, 48% of the people responded to this? Is that what you're saying?
Of the respondents of the survey, 48 were from the city of Goodyear.
Oh, 48 people?
Forty-eight percent. It was around, I think, 20, over 2,000 people participated in the survey. And of those that noted where they lived, 48% of them, so say 50% of 2,000, 1,000 people, you know, less, a little less, were from the city of Goodyear.
Shout out to those citizens.
And yeah, absolutely. It was great participation. It was posted on the, on the city website, Twitter accounts, et cetera, et cetera. It was, you know, it was great participation.
So there's an example, rather than a 400, there's a thousand people they looked at. And we were talking about survey before, okay, so, thank you.
You're welcome. So, but yeah, it was great participation that we had. And these are just, you know, some highlights and some of the things that helped us in fine-tuning the recommendations into data analysis. Reasons for not using transit, you know, there's no bus service in my area. It takes too long to get there. It doesn't go where I want to go, or it takes too far to walk. So we were keeping that in mind, I mean, everything, all the questions that everyone answered helped us in fine-tuning the recommendations. Also, the most important transit improvements, they would, residents would like buses to learn, to run later at night, buses to come more often, and bus service to more places where I want to go. So, and again, everything was just helping us in fine-tuning the recommendations. One interesting thing about the models that we were using and the information that we were using, and, you know, within the study area itself, I believe, like between 70 and 80% of all residents within the cities that, that the study was conducted reside within the actual proposal of the study area itself. So it's interesting to, you know, people that, residents that participated in answering the survey, and how eventually in the future, 70 to 80% would be located within the service area that we were noting. So I just found that very interesting. So we also did the transit summit. We had 50 attendees, and that was in April of 2012. It was a great effort. We had press coverage. We had a great follow-up, some really interesting key input that we received, serve key activity centers, downtowns, medical facilities, and employment centers and schools.
We're gonna have to speak louder because as you go rapidly, you're getting less and less and less, and we will get a complaint.
Thank you, Mayor, we'll do.
Please speak up.
We'll do. So we got great participation, we just, everyone that was attending, we did an exercise. We put maps out on the table, and we asked, what's your ideal transit system? Who do you want to serve? And what are some themes or concepts or items of importance that you want in your transit system? And we divided the exercise into, I believe, it was 10 tables, no, I think it was between seven and 10 tables, and everyone had a map on there, and just looking at future concepts of what transit is. Some of the tables discussed more circulator service, a spoken hub system, others, a perfect grid system. So all this, again, was, helped us in fine-tuning some of the recommendations. Another one was enhanced multimodal connectivity, a total transit system. So, and the concept behind this was, you know, one size does not fit all. We need a multitude of tools to be able to serve the different markets, different needs, and promote ease of use and simpler, fair system branding and understandable maps. So something that just makes it easier to understand the system.
Did one service come out over, ahead of another? I mean, you know, you said it's not, the key is it's something different for each individual. Was there a segment of our population that we had more suggestion, the same suggestion from, or?
It was, from my recollection, from the summit and the survey, it was more internalized trips, so circulators sort of floated to the top.
Okay.
And sort of as the initial step, because it connects neighborhoods, it connects to where people want to go. And then the second one was local service, the local fixed route service that travels on Van Buren, McDowell, Thomas, for example. So when everything was condensed, and we did a lot of number crunching data analysis, and everything sort of highlighted from the entire service area that spanned further south, where the population is projected to be employment, you know, in greater concentrations, is in this area following I-10, you know, and it's understandably so, and it's been following sort of that pattern. And using that, we then started pulling out, you know, the transit tools, what can be applied to these different areas, what are the markets? So we had circulator, we had local fixed route. Yes.
Just while you're talking.
Yes, Councilman.
Don't stop talking.
Oh, okay. So, and then we were looking at, of course, some of the data, and everything got rolled up into, into this map here, sort of identifying the service area. We could blanket the entire study area, but it wouldn't be effective, and, you know, so we had to, we had to play with some of the boundaries. And when applying the concepts of, some of the concepts of transit tools, say, local fixed route, Rapid Express, or neighborhood circulators, or even the 685 that's on the top right corner there, that currently passes through the Southwest Valley, it's a 685 Aho-Hilipin connector. And then on top of that, of course, the basic infrastructure of bus stops and certain amenities that a bus stop would require, transit centers or parking rides. What are some of the assets that are out there that we could connect to and then build on top of? So the plan approach, and what we wanted to do is, again, from the very beginning of the presentation, is, you know, we wanted to be within, in developing the plan, we wanted a plan to be effective, convenient, cost-effective, affordable, equitable, sustainable, and economical, and consistent. A rich grid, for example, would have been blanketing the entire service area with a particular type of bus, and it would be very unproductive. So we scaled back, you know, and even scaled back between what our measure of affordability and effectiveness has shown from research and consultant knowledge as well.
Do you have those, do you have those mapped?
Yes, Councilman.
Did you, did you guys go through the process?
Did you go through the process of mapping an A, mapping a B, and mapping a C?
Council, Mayor Lord, Councilman, yes, we did, actually. We threw into this model a rich grid, a rich grid of service. And we ran the model and tried to figure out what would be the productivity? I mean, is it what currently is productive in the valley based on metrics that the valley currently observes, like Valley Metro through the Transit Performance Report? So we looked at that productivity, and then we dialed down from there. It was, actually, it fell off the metrics. It wasn't as productive as we were thinking.
Yeah, I couldn't imagine that it would be. Is there, would it be possible for us to get those three, just the map, to say, in a rich grid system, you know, there'd be buses crisscrossing everywhere, and then in the productive, it would be this, and then, can we, can we get a sample? I'm, you know, I'm, I'm really thinking how great it would have been to lay, you know, lay one on top of the other to kind of, yeah, to layer it, but...
Translucent, is that what you're saying? That's...
That's what I'm envisioning, but it's not, it's not available electronically, but...
Sure, that's in the MAGA, MAG costing, is there?
But just, just to see those three different things, I think would be helpful.
Absolutely, we can share.
It's a great idea, yeah.
Thank you. So walking through some of the short-term recommendations, increase, and then, this is the rollout of the service recommendations for the short-term, mid-term, and long-term. So for the short-term recommendations, increase current bus frequencies at least to 30 minutes on McDowell and Van Buren, and again, this is by 2015 timeframe. Expand existing circulator service and initiate previously planned Goodyear circulator route. And investigate a circulator service in Buckeye. And then this is system-wide, and you'll see aspects of, that apply to individual cities through the recommendations. So if you pay attention to the screen, this is, the red line is following the recommendation, so you could visualize them on the map. So that's the circulator, and then that is a recommendation for the city of Avondale, a circulator north of the 10, because right now, currently, they have a circulator south of the 10 servicing the town of, the city of Tallison and also Avondale. One interesting and great concept or fact about transit is that it is flexible. When the Avondale circulator was being analyzed and planned, Tallison, or the concept of traveling into the city of Tallison was not included in the initial recommendation, but eventually it did, it grew, it's flexible, and now it's providing service to the city of Tallison and grabbing residents and taking them in between both cities, which is great. And initially, there was a Route 131 servicing the area, and that was around 60 to 75-minute frequency, and that was just not working for anybody. And the, what was done with the Avondale circulator, it was rerouted a little bit through URS as well, the consultant on this, on this effort, and MAGA, and the concept was rerouted, and frequency was recommended to be a 30-minute frequency, and ridership just took off, and it's been very successful in the past few months. So it's just, it's great.
Jorge, we talked about it, the briefing that you did a month or so ago, about the, our small group, right now, the, this yellow, which is a proposed new route on the short-term, is that correct?
That is correct, Councilman.
That, right now, it goes down Avondale, or I'm sorry, it goes down Yuma Road, which at this point is nothing but cotton fields on either side. And we had talked about perhaps a consideration that that be moved up to Van Buren, which would take it by the municipal complex, which will contain the library and this, et cetera. You're taking a note, so I'm assuming that we forgot about that part. But is that something that you guys had looked at, or is...
Councilman, Mayor Councilman, yes, we actually, we've been keeping that in mind, and one of the recommendations before this actually hits, hits the road, is working with Valley Metro staff and doing a fine-tuning of the recommendation. One is the concept up here, and once you're faced with it, you know, the execution phase, you want to make sure that, that, that the plan, this works.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Question. Joanne?
How does the partnership of Dial-A-Ride work with this system? I don't know a whole lot about Dial-A-Ride, and I know that we've had citizens requesting it, they've complained about the price, they've complained that they don't come out as far. I don't, I don't really understand the complete partnership of it. So could you explain a little bit more about what Dial-A-Ride is?
Associate Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, yes, thank you. The, so there is a federal requirement of, if you provide fixed route service, say, a local route that is tied to frequency, to a certain alignment, to a certain road, you're required by federal regulations to provide ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, paratransit service, three-quarters of a mile from that, from that alignment. And this is federal requirement. Some cities, and you do, I think, half an hour before and half an hour of the end time of that particular route. But if, a city may opt to provide it by itself, there's some examples, I think the city of Surprise had a Dial-A-Ride system operating, and it just, it got expensive for them, and they looked at a different concept, they looked at taxi voucher service, and they've been working with Valley Metro to provide that, that service. But again, average trip on, it's individualized service, so average trip on a Dial-A-Ride vehicle is like around $35 to $37 per trip. So, but I don't have the actual numbers right now for how the taxi fare, taxi voucher system is working, but I could actually get that for you, I'll be more than happy. So some communities have opted, say, for example, city of Phoenix had a, before the economic downturn, they provided paratransit service. Paratransit means anything that does not follow a fixed route. So event pool, a carpool is a paratransit service, or even, you know, the ADA service or paratransit Dial-A-Ride service. So many terms and pretty much describe the same thing. But yeah, Phoenix had that policy, but then the downturn came, they focused their Dial-A-Ride system for ADA-certified individuals only, and they opted for a senior cab program for Phoenix residents. So there's a few options, again, a few tools that are there. For this purpose and modeling, because there's so many ways to look at it, we said, anything that's within three-quarters of a mile that is receiving or proposed service is getting the complimentary ADA paratransit service. But we only kept it to what's federally required, not beyond the scope.
Okay, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in there. It's probably not understood, because we have such little fixed route bus service right now, that Goodyear actually is providing Dial-A-Ride service, but we're providing it according to the federal rule, which is, as Jorge mentioned, three-quarters of a mile from that route. So the only service that we're providing on the larger buses, on the fixed route service, not including the express bus, is on McDowell Road between Diceart and Litchfield, and on Van Buren, but barely touching our border. The Route 3, which drives along Van Buren, is actually paid for mostly by the city of Avondale, but if three-quarters of a mile from Van Buren up to Central involves Goodyear residents, and they request Dial-A-Ride service, Goodyear is charged for that service. Okay, so it's that three-quarter mile rule from wherever the service is that generates that charge, if people choose Dial-A-Ride. So those are the only two routes right now that Goodyear covers in terms of Dial-A-Ride. Now, were we to implement some form of circulator service, wherever that circulator goes, we would be obligated to provide Dial-A-Ride service three-quarters of a mile from that route. If it's fixed route, there are some circulator services that Jorge may touch on, that are flexible routes. They are not on that same route every single day, in which case the federal rule doesn't apply, but we would probably take into consideration whatever those needs are. And we do have information that we can get that will give you a better idea of how many folks are using Goodyear Dial-A-Ride, but I can tell you right now, it's not a high number. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that a little.
Just for clarification, when you talk about three-quarters of a mile, are you saying three-quarters of a mile north of Van Buren and three-quarters of a mile south like a box that gets, gets colored in? That's the area?
Mayor, Councilmember Pazillo, that's correct. And by the way, that service right now, it's provided by the city of Phoenix. We work with the city of Avondale, which has a far more extensive transit program to handle the billing for that, but I think the key issue, and I think you touched on it, Vice Mayor, about Dial-A-Ride, is it's only within certain borders. So for instance, if we were to pick up a passenger for Dial-A-Ride on McDowell Road in Goodyear, we would only be able to take them as far as the Southwest Valley area border, which is actually, I believe somewhere in Tallison, let's assume we're going east, somebody needs to go to Phoenix. We would drop them at that border, and they would have to get Phoenix Dial-A-Ride service to get them the rest of the way. And that's the major inconvenience about Dial-A-Ride. It's unfortunate that the expense is so great, and the service doesn't match that cost in terms of efficiencies, as Jorge's been talking about. That's really been the issue with Dial-A-Ride.
Yeah, that doesn't seem, no. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, yes, and that's one of the concepts that, for example, the East Valley, they've been, they've been wrestling with, and they developed the East Valley Ride Choice. So they have a mileage reimbursement program, you know, so if an individual drives another individual to a doctor's appointment or any appointment, they log the hours, and there's a handful of rules and a bunch of different...
There's no liability to that, so, I mean, the individual driving has the liability of, if something happened, right? Because I was asking that before, I think in Surprise, same thing.
To be, by, Mayor, to be honest, I'm not too sure about the liability issue, but I...
Somebody told me that.
Okay, perfect.
I know that the Alzheimer's home in Surprise does volunteer drivers. All right, and so, yeah, I don't think there's any insurance for them at all.
Mayor, members of the council, there's also a great document on the MAGA website, it's the Transportation Ambassador Program, and it's for the nonprofit agencies that actually receive federal money, and they have the resources out there, and who provides what type of service. And I actually noted to one of the individuals that attended, that I'll be sending that information to, that attended the open house, because it's a wealth of information as well. If you also work with nonprofit agencies, you can get some mobility options as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So midterm recommendations, 2020 timeframe area. Expand east-west arterial bus service west to Litchfield Road. Introduce, introduce north-south arterial bus service on Litchfield and Diceart Roads. Expand or modify circulator service to respond to conditions, and this is, this goes back to the item noted about the city of Tallison that expanded their circulator, the Avondale Zoom into, to serve Tallison. Zoom into, to serve Tolason. And expand ADA services as fixed route services expand. For the modify, for the third bullet point, for the modified transit service, there's a transit book in, in the region that is updated every six months, so there's always an opportunity, if something is not working, to fine tune something, that there's also an opportunity to do that there. So this will show the map, and these are, in red, are some of the concepts highlighted here, the short-term recommendations. So expand service west on local routes, and these are just locals right now. Then expand service to the, to the Goodyear circulator. Look at, study a circulator north of the 10 in Goodyear. A flexible route service. And then circulator service in Buckeye, these are, again, the recommendations. The flexible service is what is currently operating right now, the 685, it, it travels from point A to point B, but could deviate if you call ahead one day to be able to get a pickup, request a pickup, so it could come in, actually pick you up the day that you requested service. Long-term recommendations in 2030 timeframe. Expand East-West arterial bus service farther west. Improve service frequencies of productive routes. Expand ADA service as fixed route service expands. And these are some, the concept, and again, it's just, the red lines will be picking up from after the midterm recommendations.
I have a question.
Joanne?
Thank you. As, I know currently we do not have the, really the density or the, the population, but when you see cities that have, Scottsdale has them, what I always call Molly Trolleys, I, I guess that those are probably, help me with the definition, I would imagine that those are more for a fixed route that takes you to specific amenities that are popular. Would you, would you say that's what they are, and are they, do they cost a city less to have something like that? I mean, if, I'm visioning, you know, 10 years from now, if you were to go from the mall and down Pebble Creek, and you were to come, you know, just kind of had this, this, I don't know, 10-mile kind of route that people could, could hop on, what, what is the difference of a Molly Trolley? Or is that a private function altogether that's not even a, a city transportation? Is that just an over glorified taxi? I don't realize.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, so there is the concept of, the one in downtown Phoenix that I remember was Ollie the Trolley as well.
There was a different name.
Yeah, yeah, even Molly, yeah. So, and, and that was, it was between the Downtown Phoenix Partnership and, and the city as well, so they contributed some amount, I can't remember the actual amount, but it was a partnership, and they traveled in key destinations and connecting different restaurants, you know, venues, et cetera. At certain hours of the day, during the morning, or during the, the AM hours of the day, or before the afternoon, it was, it's the dash, the downtown circulator, and that was funded strictly by the city. And then in the afternoon, it was the, the night dash. In Scottsdale, they had, they tried, I think, right now, a hospitality circulator that was, I believe, funded, and I could get you the right information, but I know it was partly funded with local businesses.
That's what I was thinking, private partnerships that you could get.
Yeah, and, and they, they did that, but it's only seasonal, so it goes away at, at certain times of the month, at certain times of the year. And then for the neighborhood circulators within Scottsdale, Phoenix, Tempe, they are solely funded by the cities themselves. And, and sort of that's the different concept is, you can have a different vehicle, the City of Scottsdale has a vehicle that is, that they have, they contract with the, the trolley operator, and it looks like a little trolley. In City of Phoenix, they have the, or even in Tempe, and City of Glendale as well, they have the, the Gus, the Phoenix Neighborhood Circulators, and the Orbitz in Tempe. And the buses, they have a certain color scheme, so you could swap them out. If one, you know, dies at a certain garage, then you could just replace it and send that same bus up there. So there's different concepts, I don't know if that answered your question.
Get a Zizzi for the ballpark.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I was just thinking, there's other, you know, just other options that are out there. I mean, I understand, in the long run, this will be, you know, I appreciate this study, and obviously, it's something that we have to look at as a city, especially as we grow, and the needs of our, our citizens are there. But at the same time, it's like, is there anything that's, that's cheaper that we can do sooner, you know, and, and that's why I was just thinking of all those different things I see out there, and of course, those little trolleys are so much more quaint. Yeah, but, okay, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. One, one last point, Mayor, members of the council, is with, right now, the success of the Zoom, for example, in, in Avondale, they have a pretty, pretty competitive rate.
Price per mile, by any chance?
It's quite competitive, and, and they were able to expand some additional services because they, they had a better rate, a cost per mile. In, the custom in the valley has been to pay for per mile. So every mile, you know, the odometer clicks, there's a charge of X amount of dollars, and you multiply that by how many trips it does in a weekday, Saturday, Sunday, times, you know, 255 weekdays, 52 Saturdays, 65 Sundays holidays. So it just, it grows.
Vice Mayor, I think that, that's one of the things, it kind of ties back to Councilmember Stipp's question about the maps and the rich grid. When we set out with this study, it's, it's, it's staff, our staff, spending a lot of time at a lot of transit meetings, listening to a lot of stories of cities with ambitious transit programs and great goals to get people to do exactly what we're talking about today. What we, what we really wanted to focus on with this, and I have to say, there's got to be a medal out there for Jorge, because we kept trying to bring it down to not transit speak, but just people speak, about how do we do this in a way where we will never, or at least not likely ever, talk about cutting service?
Yeah, that's it. If you're gonna do it, you gotta do it sustainably.
There is a robust effort about, to make sure that you're providing equity when you're providing transit. You talked about the trolley. I met, one of the guys that is a maintenance guy for the City of Scottsdale, he, he gets it about how that's a branding for the City of Scottsdale to provide that trolley, it's so recognizable when it's on the street, in, in a very busy traffic area, and, but it is extremely high cost to maintain that branding.
I, I, yeah, I have no idea, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, and we didn't, we didn't even drill down to that, there, and you'll see, Jorge touched on maintenance costs, because we have to. But when we draw these lines, and when we ask the consultant and MAG to come up with what a short-term, a midterm, and a long-term route might look like, it was with the understanding that there is no way that that is going to be what it looks like down the road when we're ready to do this. Because we're going to obviously work toward what the demand is. Where are our people? Where do they want to go? We know today what we are expecting to be there, but where are they actually, where would we really need to go? And I know from Avondale's experience, because we talk to them all the time, that they've made certain adjustments to try to make sure that they're delivering what the public expects. So this is a flexible, very publicly-driven rendering of what we think this would look like. Cost is, was always in the back of our minds, and cost per mile is the driving factor for, for transit right now. Phoenix will tell you it's cost per person, we don't even want to go there right now, it's, it's cost per mile, and we will tweak those lines in whatever way we can to address what, where we think that need is.
Of course, unlike Avondale, we're elongated. We have more miles to cover in that sense.
Yeah, and, and Jorge also mentioned earlier on, the RTP, the Regional Transportation Plan, and I think Councilmember Pazillo can speak to the fact that the service we got out of the Prop 400, the half-cent sales tax, is a little strange. The only thing that was ever programmed for Goodyear were these half-mile or one-mile segments along our major arterials, Thomas, Indian School, Van Buren, McDowell. That only gets people to the border of Goodyear, and that's it. So this is something that's a little more Goodyear-centric, a little more common sense, really, in terms of providing people the mobility that they need and getting them where we want them to go. Just a little bit of history on that.
Mayor, members of, sorry, Councilman?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill?
No, that's all right. While we're talking about dollars and cents about the whole thing, do we have an idea, and we talk about cost per mile, do we have, do we have any idea about what it costs for the cab voucher system? Do we have, does MAG have any, you guys have any data on that?
Mayor, members of the council, we can obtain the data off the top of my head, I-
Yeah, if you can, if we can get that.
Wait a minute, there's, it looks like there's a figure there.
Well, it's for the, it's- That's actually the cost per mile for a circulator service. The taxi service, it kind of depends on the contractor providing it and where people want to go, and there's a lot that factors into it, but it's becoming a, it's getting out there more. East Valley is moving to that service entirely.
Yeah, and I guess what I'm driving with that is, there's got, there, the, there's got to be some average that we can say, we think it's between, you know, $7 and $20 a trip, as opposed to $30 and $70, or, I mean, we've got to have a ballpark.
We'd be happy to get that information.
If we can kind of get into that, that might be helpful to maybe address the dial-a-ride scenario. I know anybody that I run into that talks about transit, that's the, that's really their only transit issue.
I think we all hear that.
And I think everybody has, yeah. So getting that information might be a short-term or a midterm kind of goal as well, but it'd be, just be helpful. Thanks.
We can get that.
Joanne?
Well, like, again, like I said, I really appreciate the study. Until you looked at it, we would have no clue. And so I really, it was time, you know, we, we had asked for it a couple of years ago, but I'm certainly glad that it's, it's here now. One last thing that I know I mentioned within our, our smaller group, that I just want to, to say to staff, is that as you had looked at expanding hours of possible sites, I know that was within, a couple of slides back, you had talked about that. One thing I had noticed this past, and I, I mentioned to you before, this past winter season, is that our, our bus stops are not lit. And so, you know, when, when the number one line said, extend the hours of, you know, transportation, well, that's in the evening hours or early morning hours, and it's dark. And so I think that, you know, we just, that's a detail that we want to have, you know, for our citizens, that they feel safe and it's lit, and, you know, there's not going to be heater, but, you know, that there is some kind of light form.
Unfortunately, our city engineer, engineering director, has already been in touch with me about possible funding opportunities for lighting at our bus bays, our bus stops.
Shoot, I was hoping for, you know, something that was solar powered, you know?
Hey, that's not off the table, it's not off the table. We also want to make sure we don't look at anything where a bus is not going yet, that we don't want to lead people to a place where there's no service. So, yeah, it, we've already got that on our ticker as a to-do.
Just as a detail for the future. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, and it's a great point, because we allotted, based on the knowledge of certain, the research that we've done, we allotted a certain percentage to accompany the, the infrastructure. As you grow in transit, you want to be able to have sufficient funds for bus stop placements and different items like that. And then I've also shared with the PMT, and it's a great study that's also being done by MAG, it's called Designing Transit Accessible Communities, and it's taking advantage of what's existing in the public right-of-way, and take advantage of the light source or anything, and also septic, crime prevention through environmental design, that when, when implementing certain items, you know, don't plant a bush, it's going to be like seven feet tall, and, you know, so there's a few concepts out there that, that we've been sharing with, with the PMT as well, to, to continue this, the effort. You're welcome. And drumroll, please. So, and this is as a system, when we have fine-tuned information and data within the, the final plan itself, but net operating cost on this is what is per year, based on the different horizon years that we have, and this is for the entire system with all the cities participating. Short-term recommendations, it looks like $4.6 million, based on $2,012. The midterm as service grows, 12.3, and then the long-term, because of service frequencies, as they, as they get better, that bus is not, no longer, no longer traveling once in an hour, it's traveling twice an hour, so that you're, you're adding a little, a few more costs there. So on, an average annual for the entire system, 10.6 million, that's what is being looked at. Capital buses, bus stops in certain facilities out there, these are the accompanying costs. We have short-term ranging of 3.3 million, midterm 12.4, and then the long-term with a robust service, 18.3. And we, again, we have a lot of the information, if you have any questions. Funding transit service, and in the, the previous session that I briefed you all, we covered a handful of, of different scenarios, and one is a commitment for, of local funds, either general fund or a certain avenue of funding that's coming to be able to provide service for, for transit, some funds for transit, or a new or local transportation tax, for example. Transportation, meaning, City of Scottsdale has one, for example, Mesa had a quality of life tax that funded parks, transportation, and transit improvements. I think that's sunset, but Glendale has the Glendale Go, Tempe, Tempe in Motion, City of Phoenix T2000, and then the regional one is Prop 400. At leverage of federal funds that are available for the study area, we, the study area is within the Avondale, the Avondale-Goodyear Small UZA, and that Small UZA, based on a certain population threshold, if you pass that threshold, you, you would only, you can only use the allotted funds for capital projects, but since it's still a Small UZA based on the last census, a lot of the funds can be used, 50% of the funds can be used for operating expenses. So that's a, a leverage point there. And then, you know, discussion, maybe some of the concepts in a continuation for the new projects of the Regional Transportation Plan. So this is some information for you to, you know, weigh and consider, and figure out how to move forward with that one. Some of the next steps, Southwest Valley Local Transit System Plan to be finalized and placed online in April of 2013. Southwest Valley Communities, that's, this is the very first recommendation that we have in a recommendation matrix. Continue the conversation, work, maybe working together through the Southwest Valley Multimodal Group or other forum to keep the conversation going. And, and this is also the, what I heard at a, I did a presentation about the study at the Benavilla Group in the Northwest Valley, and they said, we've gotten so far because of the conversation, because it's holding these conversations, we know how much it's going to cost, we know how much, certain, certain elements that are required to make such a service happen. If we wouldn't have been talking about it, we would never know. So the next step is continue that conversation, and then outweigh all the other priorities that, that are in the basket, and see, you know, how it could be funded, or if not now, then when. And determine funding priorities and level of commitment to short or long-term investments. And I just want to share with you the open house that we had, and this was last week on, on Thursday, it was, I personally feel is a great event. We got some participation, we got some members of the public out there, even staff from the different cities came up, and they were learning about the project, learning about the concepts, learning about transit. And I just want to say, you know, just a few words about Sean, he's the gentleman in the wheelchair there, he's an Army veteran, he lives, I believe, like on Diceart and McDowell Road, he is a City of Goodyear resident, wonderful person. I'm originally from Central America, Managua, Nicaragua. He went down there in 1998 after Hurricane Mitch to rebuild roads and infrastructure. You know, so it's not every day that you're in a public environment, talking transit, and you meet someone that has actually touched a fellow citizen. So he's just a great person, and he wanted me to share some information that a lot of veterans are also looking at, Goodyear, he said personally, to reside in, and he, you know, just to carry the message forward to please provide mobility.
He's actually the one that asked me about the dial-a-ride.
Okay, we had a great conversation, yeah. He actually also speaks Spanish, too, you know? Yeah, and then we had other residents there, we had staff from Congressman Gruhaba's office also stopped by. So we had a handful of residents out there, just starting about the project, and again, a lot of the information is on the website, I'd be more than happy to talk to anybody, meet with anybody, and of course, you know, the, the rest of staff, the consultant, and Christine, to be able to just get the message out there. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Wally?
I would like to have you send us the cost per mile that Avondale charges, please.
Can you speak up a little louder?
I'm sorry. I would like to have the cost per mile that Avondale charges sent to the, the council, please, so that we have some reference of what they're paying. I know it won't be- I know it won't be with our line, but it'll give us some idea of what we're talking about. Thank you.
Mayor, yes, Councilwoman, yes.
Any other questions? Yes, Bill?
During our briefing, we talked about the transit culture and perhaps the lack of it in our city. And I'm wondering if there's not any universal data or studies or something that the transportation world has come up with to talk about ways or strategies to promote that type of a culture? Does this little good to put in a bus system if no one's going to use it? And, and I, I think if you go to those bigger cities that have it, that it reaches out, people are using it, so there's something about their culture. Is there, does that, do those documents exist that, I don't know, I'm certainly not suggesting that, that it's a strategic plan initiative or anything like that, but just some idea of things that we can do, because we're talking about some things are going to come out in 2030. Well, that's a long time between now and then, and we can really educate the public on changing our culture.
I think what you're just saying, educate the public, and I think that's the new trend of the city, is to, before we come up with a number of actions, that we start educating the cities and asking the question. And so, that's, we have to reach out to the public to find this out. Now, if we go by the telephone calls that we get, I would say, at this point, I think there's interest, but you'd have to confirm that in the numbers. Kristi, you had something to say?
I was going to say, that's a great point, Councilmember Stipp. I, I think what we saw in Avondale was really what made us all go, we need to take a look at this a little bit closer, because they started with one bus, and it, it just kind of grew from there. It became something that people saw on the street, and it just made others ask questions. And a lot of the cities started out that way. So, to be fair, this is your first of several studies in the gate right now. You have a transportation master plan, a parks master plan, and a general plan. And there is an awesome website created by my, my colleague, Katie Wilkin, to serve our general plan purpose. But this will dovetail into that as a means for folks to ask questions and to learn more about how this service works. We, we weren't expecting any great overflow of, of interest in this right now. You've got a lot coming up. But this will come back to you through the transportation master plan, because there is a transit element in that as well. So, we have some time, and Jorge just got his feet wet with, with the Goodyear City Council. He has to go to the Buckeye Town Council, he's going to the Litchfield Park City Council, he's going to the Avondale City Council. I may go to one or two of those just to egg him on. But he's going to make a similar, if not maybe a little more, you know, more town-specific presentation to those councils, and it all goes back to that, keeping the conversation going.
Well, I would think the conversation needs to be going, because we have, we have a mall coming in. And I would like us to be at least one step ahead of that, so that we have transportation from different areas to bring business in, bring the people into the mall. So, when you say we have lots of time, I, you know, I don't see lots in there with that mall coming. And we certainly want to get the, and I'm hoping the Buckeye gets very interested in this, because we want the Buckeye people to come in, we want the Avondale people to come in. And then the others will, of course, probably come on other modes. But, so for, for, I think for our city, it's really important that we figure out something to get people from, I, I just look up Australia, you know, and getting people back and forth. And, and it would also improve their businesses up there. So, if it takes us reaching out to the business community to find out, bringing them together to find out what kind of financial agreement we could come to to help us start, you know, some type of service, I, you know, I would really be promoting that. And so, I'm assuming everybody, I see Jennifer, would you like to address something on that?
Yes, in our, thank you, Mayor, in our private briefing, I had also brought up, you know, being from Australia and looking at the proposed route, you know, we're really missing the southern part of the city with this. Just so that it's on public record, can you comment, how long might it be before we can get something into Australia? How would that work? Because, you know, it'd be great to be able to go to a ballgame safely, enjoy the game, or go to the mall and then have that ride back home. But we don't see it anywhere, and it's just kind of hard to justify that we all pay for this tax that will be in an area that, you know, some people won't have access too easily. So, just wondering if you could just briefly?
It, it really does come down to that cost per mile and what we're willing to pay. It, it just, there's a cost for the vehicle, there is a cost for the service, the driver. It, it becomes a cost issue. It can be done, but it would have to be considered by this mayor and council as part of that whole project. We do understand, and we, we realize when we engaged in this study that including the Australian community would be challenging, because if we're talking about 30-minute frequencies, just getting from the middle of Goodyear up the hill can be, it can be like that, and, and spring training sometimes makes that challenging, too. It can be done, and we can look at where it has been done. As a matter of fact, it may have been covered in our last study, the Goodyear study. And we can certainly address it and provide a little more information. I'm not really sure how we can quantify it right now, just because it, it, it's a challenge being separated from the rest of the metropolitan area of Goodyear. And I, I know we're running out of time. I just want to...
We don't have to worry about the time, okay?
Okay, so, we, I said time, and, and I don't want this to feel like there is too much or not enough. There is a planning effort that would need to be undertaken by staff, that would take a little time. When I say you have a little bit of, we have months that we can continue to engage with you and provide more information. I have to give a shout-out to Cheryl Holman, who is hopefully still here. There she is. Cheryl and I have been talking about transit in Goodyear and the Southwest area for the last 10 years. And she's been such a motivating force to keep that conversation going, and it's led to where we are today, which is, to be honest, a Zoom circulator in Avondale, which folks in Goodyear are talking about. And I think I've attended these general plan meetings. This is a great group of people. It's just an awesome mix of every type of citizen in Goodyear. I can't think of a better place for this conversation to have more life and to continue than, as part of that group, and to continue to provide feedback to you.
Joanne?
Well, I think also the exciting thing to think about, but to also gather from our citizens and, and citizens 10 and 20 years from now, is that our city is in such an infancy, quite frankly, and that we have to decide, not just this council, but the citizens of Goodyear, of saying, are we going to build our city around the car? Are we going to come up with other ideas of transportation? And, and I think that's the exciting thing. We're not going to have to go back and, and be Phoenix. It has to tear through streets and buildings and upset businesses as we grow. But, but that's something that the citizens of Goodyear have to say, that we have to hear, you know? That this is something that, you know, we want to see now, but we know it's going to take time, and we know it's going to be the future that, you know, are going to be the people that will get to really enjoy it. But I think that, to me, that's the key thing. Are we going to build this city around the car? Or we're going to build it with other modes of transportation?
Well, I guess then, our commitment should be that we're going to keep that message out there, and a steady message, so that we're hearing from our citizens, and it's going to be a sacrifice. So, we have to tell them ahead of time, and we have to prepare them.
But those numbers weren't little.
No, well, I'd say they're a sacrifice. So, I, I think that we have to do that as the time goes on. So, we build that coalition of citizens who are ready to have that happen, so. Jorge, that was a great presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it, and we know you had a little difficulty getting out here, and we appreciate you making it. And so, oh, and we have Sheri here. Well, Sheri Floritano has just taken her seat. You missed a great briefing, but we'll, we'll make sure that you get caught up on this one from Christine, okay, to take care of that, so.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity. And again, I apologize in, in getting late, but...
It was a transit issue.
I was waiting for the circulator. But no, thank you very much, and again, any questions, please. Christine has my card, you have my contact information. We'll be more than happy to address your questions. Thank you again.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Christine, thank you. What we're going to do now is we're going to adjourn this meeting, and we got to give time to transfer things up with the DIA. So, everybody, look at that clock. Is 6:15 enough? If we, if you bring me, okay, so, I'm going to adjourn this, and we'll...